Ms. Paul Hoover. Mr. Lombardi.
Yes.
Mr. Leno.
Here.
Mr. Ryan.
Here. Do you stand for the President's meeting?
I am in the presence of the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with a vision and justice for all.
In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Milford Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date and time in place, thereof posted in the Borough Hall and the Milford Public Library. Notices have been sent to the record in the Twin Borough News. The Board announces that under its long-standing policy, it will not discuss in public any comments made by members of the public concerning individual staff members. At this time, please be advised that all cell phones and electronic devices are to be turned off. Meetings of the Board are open to the public and all members of the community should feel free to participate. Before coming to the Board, the chain of command should be followed. There are two portions of the meeting reserved for comments from the public. The first at the beginning of the meeting for agenda items only, and the second at the end of the meeting for other items. Issues raised by the public may or may not be responded to by the Board, but all comments will be considered. The Board requests that all members of the public be mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Due to confidentiality and legal rights afforded by the state of New Jersey, members of the public are asked to not speak negatively or in derogatory manner about any employee of the Board or any student. Okay, I seek the motion to approve the minutes of December 4th regular meeting and January 7th reorganization. Okay, I can hear the September Board. Jill, you got a second? Tony, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Before we move forward, we're going to do a special presentation.
All right, thank you everyone for coming, braving the cold, I appreciate it. Packed house, if you love a Board of Education. So, tonight, we want to honor the students who are selected to the Burden County End or North Region Chorus for band, chorus, or orchestra. So, great job. And we have to keep in mind, such an accomplishment, you know, we hear about sports and like make, you know, county recognition for football or county recognition for wrestling, this is a county recognition for the arts. And it's very, very difficult to achieve, it's very competitive, you're competing against the top kids from every single district. So, for you to achieve this is a phenomenal accomplishment. And the Board and I and the teachers support this, we love how you are making strides and taking a chance to even compete for it. Because there's a very good chance you don't make it, correct? Like in everything. Every competition, there's a chance you get cut, you get asked to leave, you don't come back, and that can be a deterrent. So, number one, I'm proud of everyone who went for it. Not everybody made it. You guys are not the lucky ones. You guys earned it through merit, and I think that's very, very important. When other kids are home and playing video games, you are practicing, correct? Instead of just... I hopefully practice. But I think that's really important. And so many times, in sports, you know, you look at, you know, you see them practicing on the field, practicing on the field, and so what you do at home, in your bedroom, or in the corridor or band room, and it's not broadcasted as much. And it's really important that people see how hard you work and how you persevere at that. So, I'd like to recognize, at the high school level, Christian Dionisio, Vince Armida, and Neil Lynch. We're all selected. We're all who achieved the Burden County Chorus, and Christian and Vince were also selected to the North Region Chorus and are auditioning for the State Chorus, correct? So, great job.
Yes.
Mrs. Schwartz, who now retired, she was your teacher, and now Kimberly Corzilius, you're here, you are now the next in line. She was your teacher, I know they are both proud of you, the faculty, the Board, administration are all proud of you. So, thank you very much for your accomplishment. In middle school, Charles Gensler was selected for the Burden County Band for Tuba, that is our only band person represented in the Chorus, Mrs. Heidenthaler, where are you? Very proud. Talk about perseverance, there's been a number of emails about this session, and you've kept, you know, reminding me, and I... Kiana San Pedro and Anika Thomas were selected to the Middle School County Chorus, Mrs. Berenstein. And Eli Niebert and Carson Chan were selected to the North Region Orchestra and are auditioning for the States. Also, Mrs. Berenstein. So, I'm going to call you up, all we have is just a Board proclamation, we felt it's important to take time out and just pause our deliberations before we get into business to celebrate you. Do not forget that we are here and talk and debate, not much arguing there, but for the students and student opportunities. So, we're just happy to see students taking advantage of the opportunities, administration like Mrs. Morales and Mrs. Pelley are affording, okay? And the Board of Education. So, thank you very much, when I call your name, please come up. How would you like to do this?
And then stay up here too.
You're going to call up here? Okay?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. Good job, Jack.
All right, Christian Dionisio, please come up.
Oh, he's got a track meet right now.
You could do it all.
Yeah.
Vince Armida. Neil Lynch. Charlie Gensler. Kiana San Pedro. Anika Thomas. Eli Niebert. And Carson Chan. While you're up here facing the audience, you people, please just thank your parents for driving you all over the place, listening to shoot your horns and sing and all that. That's very important to me, you would not be here without their support and commitment to you. So, thank you very much.
Kiana, come in front. Can we get in one, too?
Yes. Everybody do it here. Thank you.
How long was it?
No pressure. I think I'll tell you. Thank you. Nice. Thank you. It's a good color, but...
Yes. Yes. Visiting out somewhere.
Thank you. Thank you. It's okay, it's just Kiana, the other team. And I'll be behind you. Yes. 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 Yes.
Kiana, come in front.
Yeah.
Can we get in one, too?
Yes. Yes. Everybody do it here. Thank you. No pressure. I think I'll tell you. Thank you. I think I'll tell you. Thank 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 you. Yes, it did.
You all don't have to stay, we'll pause for a minute so you guys can go home.
Thank you. Thank you. Have a good night. Yes. Thank you for being here. Thank you. 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 You did some really good work with us. Yeah. Yeah. Right? Yeah.
I remember Neil the first day.
I don't even know why I remember that.
Bad casting.
First day of bad casting? I'll probably die. Congratulations.
No, I remember meeting him. We talked for a while.
Yeah, because I'm sad to learn. Yeah, terrified. I took Mr. Manicelli. Mr. Manicelli had to walk me in on the first day because I thought it was the bad teacher, and I got a little scared. Hi, Dad. Hi, Dan. Happy New Year. Yeah, I'm a college student, so I saw this.
I figured.
Yes.
So, I texted.
The small world. Yes.
Are you still there? I got a remote.
Yeah. Of course, I can. Bye, guys, we'll see you tomorrow. See you tomorrow. Bye. Oh, come on, that's so sweet. Bye, girls.
I just keep taking pictures.
Bye, tomorrow. No, let's do a nice picture, ready? One, two, three.
Sorry.
Aw, yes. I forgot the ones of you smothering. What's your face? No. Thank you guys for recognizing our kids.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night. Tell me when you want to start again.
I think we're good.
Okay. Student form representative report, Emma Brady.
Good evening, everyone. It's been a while. So, the nice welcome meeting has been a year of a nice winter break, and we all caught up on some much easier sleep and relaxation before we signed in. But now that we're back, here's what we've announced. The National Honor Society invited new members on January 9th, and the Guide to Pride organized a lovely ceremony that everyone enjoyed, especially the desserts at the end. Those participating in this free musical are working hard to produce a very exciting production of Little Shop of Horrors. The cast and crew are getting ready for the benefit concert, featuring a talented group of students from around America. Tickets are on sale now for the benefit concert, which will be on February 1st, and spring musical performances will be on March 6th, 7th, and 8th. This past Saturday, Ms. Smith took a group of future health members to Milford's first ever HOSA conference. HOSA, or Healthcare Occupations Students of America, is a medical field-based program where students all over the country can participate to further their goals or prepare for the future careers. We end of the day winning two awards, meaning we won first place for medical terminology and group representation of sport in the competition. And Kina Oluke placed fourth for medical terminology. The Student Council used money raised from the homecoming grants this past fall to help fund the Peer Leadership Blankets Project on MLK Service Day this past Friday. Peer leadership members gathered after schools made volunteer pledges or could be donated to Project One S. Last year, currently planning our annual student university diploma opening in March and the end of the year Olympics, which will be a fun day of things for the whole school and will be a great way to end the year. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
I do, because I think there was a little bit, whatever. What was the competition that you all did with the medical terminology?
So, we went to our first HOSA conference. So, future health members got to sign up for HOSA, and it's kind of hard to explain that it's so big. It's a big group of students from all over the North Region, specifically from this conference. And we all competed for different categories, whether it was nursing assistance, or medical terminology, or anything medical related. So, we all took different activities, like tests, we did events, and then there was awards at the end. And it was a big networking thing, but, yeah, we had two students went for our first time there, which was very exciting.
How did you prepare for that, how were you all?
So, for my category, I do nursing assistance, I had to get materials, so I bought scrubs and supplies that I needed. And then to study for the test, we provided different books and resources that were needed to study. I didn't buy a book, but I studied online, and that helped me prepare for questions. It was great.
Oh, okay. Excellent.
And there's how many of you? Because there's a puzzle, kind of, right?
Yes, there was.
It's pretty popular.
I think it was 20 of us.
Yeah, 26 in my head, but there's definitely a lot. And then Mrs. Torby and Mrs. Smith were kind of supervisors that took time out of the day to take it, right?
Yes, they bought us, and that was in the same concert.
That's awesome. That's amazing.
Yeah, it's awesome.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. Any last? Great, thank you. You don't have to stay for the meeting, I know you're very busy. Thank you, Helen.
I'll be there.
Me, too. Superintendent, those who work, you go out.
Yep. All right, thank you. I'll try to make this quick. Couple things on the Board action that I'd like to talk about. First, I'd like to approve the December-January HIV report. There's one HIV for Milford High School. There was one HIV 338 form submitted, and one HIV was investigated by the Anti-G glowing Specialist and was found it, meeting the criteria for HIV. And David Owens, who had three HIV 338 forms submitted, one HIV was not forwarded for investigation on the principal determination, two HIVs were investigated by the ABS, one was found it, and one was unfounded. Berkeley, there were no 338 forms submitted, any Gibbs. I have two 338 forms that were submitted that we are currently investigating, and we'll be on next Board report. I'd like to approve the December-January suspension report. At Milford High School, four students were suspended for a total of five days. Two students each served one day of in-school suspension, one student served one day of in-school suspension and one day of out-of-school suspension, one student served one day of out-of-school suspension. At DEO, three students were suspended for a total of four days, one student served two days of out-of-school suspension, two students each served one day of in-school suspension. Berkeley, two students were suspended for a total of two days, both served one day of in-school suspension, and Gibbs, zero suspensions. For Board action, I would just like to point out the approval of the biannual statement of assurance. We also did this in October, it's for paraprofessionals, just pretty much making sure they're coded correctly, that everything is in the up and up, we have to submit it to the county. So, this is asking permission with a resolution to submit to the county, we have to do this twice a year. Under Personnel, Director of Special Services, Whitney Perot, her last day is January 31st. We searched long and hard for replacement, interviewing close to 20 candidates in three rounds of interviews. We are picky, and we did not settle, and we finally found one that we think is going to be great. Her name is Eileen Horn, she's currently infected, so we would like to get her approved. In the interim, while Eileen Horn gives her 60 days, we'd like to bring Mr. Watson back to serve as the Director of Special Services. Mr. Watson was a superintendent, so we have some special services experience through that, because, as we know, special services kind of has tend to go all over the place. And you know Mr. Watson, because he served as a VA here as well. We trust him, he's doing us a favor, we vetted him, and we think in that, you know, six weeks' time, where Eileen, until Eileen comes, that he is a great fit, because we trust him, he knows the district, we don't have to introduce him, he'll pick up running. It also doesn't hurt that, you know, he has a VA background, and as we finalize the budgets, Stephanie and I, he can give a second eye to that. We wish Whitney Perot the best of luck. I'm still angry she's leaving, but we wish her the best of luck. Retirement, Allison Hall Goldman is retiring after 19 years of service to Milford, she currently serves as the LDTC and case manager at Berkeley for Wings. She also helps with our ESI program, so we will have to replace her for next year. Under Coaches and Stipends, I just want to explain, Mr. Bruno took over for Ms. Biner in the Culinary Arts. She was already paid a sixth period, so this is nothing new, there's not even a new sixth period we're paying, she's just picking it up. And Mr. Torby, we're also going to pay a sixth period just for a month to cover the AP class for a leave replacement. We are getting a sub for the leave replacement, but the AP is a whole different ballgame, and so we're just asking Mr. Torby to cover it for that month, so not much is lost in the interim. We are confident the sub that we have with the activities and resources that the teacher left before they went on leave will suffice for them. I also want to point out two donations, one trampoline to the Wings program, the other one, Milford Education Foundation, donated an AED. The more AEDs we have, the better, it keeps our children safe. This one is going to be altered to the fieldhouse outside by the lower field. The rule of thumb is three minutes turnaround from there and back for an AED. This will make certain, in case something happened in football or soccer, that it is accessible. And we have a camera now out there to watch the AED, just in case it goes missing or some funny business, we can now find out who did it. So, we have that covered. I want to thank the Ed Foundation for the donation. And I want to say thank the Bechtow family for donating the trampoline to the Wings program. A couple happenings in the district, Winter Concert Gibbs in Berkeley went very smoothly. I thank the principals, the staff for all their work, it's a beautiful concert. I thank the Milford High School for opening up their doors, given they have to because it's a district thing, to the kids to come and perform, it makes it much more formal. And there's such a turnout from the parents now, we could not fit them all in the Gibbs and Berkeley gyms. So, especially for Gibbs, I mean, there was bottom and there was also top balcony, it was pretty much filled. That was nice. Play Unify is over. Play Unify, I got to see my first Play Unify, I got to throw tip-off, it was wonderful, I don't know if you've ever seen it, next year when it comes around, I would highly encourage you to go watch, take a half a day from work and go watch it. It is a fulfilling experience watching our GenNet students work with some of your kids with our greatest needs in competition to play basketball in other towns, it is a great environment, I would encourage you to do it. I am excited about the program, I wish it could last for a whole season, but there's a limited number of teams that, you know, want to play. That's a good idea. Wrestling is nine and up, they're currently undefeated. They're doing exceptional, we're looking to get healthy and to make a run at the States. I'd also like to point out Devin Ryan, Monka County, again, right, two years in a row, so we're very, very proud of him. When we talk about hard work and sacrifice with the kids who play instruments in Monka County, Devin Ryan definitely sacrifices. Personally, I know just talking to him, he seems quiet, but then I watched him at the last meet, and he gets pretty intense, boy. When he is warming up, he starts hitting himself in the head and everything like that. He's a tough kid and works through a lot of things, so very proud of him, the whole community is proud of him. If you didn't know, there's a wonderful article about him, Paige, did you see it? It is wonderful, it is, I'll share it with the Board, did you all see it? He wrote it? I will share it with the Board, I actually, I might have to be on one of my paper works, but I will share it out with the Board, it is exactly what we want, it's all about his loyalty to Milford and staying in Milford. He could have went to Burden Catholic or the bigger schools, but stayed and be involved. And so, it's a wonderful, wonderful article dedicated to him, and he shared every bit of it, and just as a side note, he was also officially accepted to West Point, which is a deep breath, and we're very proud of him as well. Competitive cheer, that's why I was just here on time, they were competing, we have a really good competitive cheer team, really good. I would suggest you go watch them as well, you can just tell the differences in teams, you know, I saw a couple teams before and then I watched them, just the twirls they do, how in unison they are, we have a really good team, I'm very excited, I'm very excited for how they do well. They always do well, they're always competitive, they're going to be great, but they're currently undefeated. Basketball, the girls are five and six, and the boys are 10 and five, right now they have a two seed. Louis Placio scored his 1,000th point, and it was wonderful to watch, because his family came in to watch him, his father, brother, sister, aunt, a bunch of them came in, they paused the game, they celebrated him, they had 1,000-point balloons come out, they had a banner for him, it was great. He was pressing towards the end, he had six points going into halftime, I think, and he was definitely pressing, but then, once he got it, it was like a breath of fresh air, and then we blew out. It was great. Like, everybody was waiting for it, you could see, the whole team was trying to get him the ball, force him the ball, but it worked out, and so we can put that behind us and move on. Indoor track is actually competing right now, as we speak, it's more of individuals, a lot of medals, they're doing really well. Swimming, the boys are six and two in the state. The musical, Little Shop of Horrors, Mrs. Corzilius, Mrs. Heidenthaler, and Dan Priest are all part of that. They have a set build this Saturday, I've never been to a set build, I will be popping by, most likely with my sons, to see what that's about. It's like a little cult there, a healthy cult, and they do a great job. And Mr. Africano is still involved in making these mini-sets out of foam and everything, so if it's really neat and, you know, anything quote we can give them, it's wonderful. Upcoming events, the alumni event at the concert starring alumni, Rob McLauris, coming back, you know, February 1st at 7:00 PM in Milford High School. The Throwathon, which I never heard of, is our pottery teacher will take the 11 best pottery students, and they spend the day throwing pot, not throwing pots, like creating and spinning the pots, but they call it throwing, I guess, and they want to get to 200, and they donate all the pots. So, pretty remarkable, always stopping by there. Elementary Academy Family Night, which Lauren sets up, that is 6 to 8 at Berkeley tomorrow. Heavenly Nights in basketball and wrestling, basketball is January 24th, 5:15, 7 o'clock. We will have a live special guest national anthem singer, which is always nice, and wrestling is the 31st to 6:00 PM. We also have the Young Expressions Regional High School Art Show that our kids will be a part of, it's right here in Milford from 7 to 9. So, we have a lot going on. That is it for me. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Assistant Superintendent Report, Lono Daxman.
Good evening, everyone. So, as you know, we are preparing for QSET, our date is April 1st. Ms. Gilchrist and I recently met with our county ex-specialists to begin reviewing the curriculum. The last time that they visited, we actually met with them on the official date, and then were able to make revisions following their visit. This year, they're doing it in reverse, so we met with them first, we're fine-tuning the curriculum in advance of our April 1st date. So, we're in really good shape and looking forward to that. We are just finishing up our additional round of high-impact tutoring. On November 20th, the Board approved the additional funding that came from the PIT grant in the amount of $9,343. That was used to provide additional tutoring for identified students in grades three and
Assistant Superintendent Report, Lana Docson. Good evening, everyone. So as you know, we are preparing for CSEF. Our date is April 1st. Ms. Gimlin and I recently met with our county Ed Specialist to begin reviewing the curriculum. The last time that they visited, we actually met with them on the official date, and then were able to make revisions following their visit. This year, they're doing it in reverse. So we met with them first, we're fine tuning the curriculum in advance of our April 1st date. So we're in really good shape and looking forward to that. We are just finishing up our additional round of high-impact tutoring. On November 20th, the board approved the additional funding that came from the HIT grant in the amount of $9,343. That was used to provide additional tutoring for identified students in grades three and four. And that should run through the end of next week, so we'll be really happy. And you'll see the teachers who are participating in that tutoring on tonight's board agenda. Mr. Glosso mentioned the Elementary Parent Academy. That is with a focus on literacy. Even though that's being hosted at Berkeley, that's open to all elementary families. So please join us. We look forward to seeing you there. Mr. Gier will be running the event as a coordinator, and Ms. Pellicastro will be helping out as well. Our Reach students in the elementary schools will be participating in the Amazing Race, which is a collaborative learning experience with their peers in Bergen County. We're looking forward to that. And that will be taking place in Paramus. And we recently finished our winter benchmarking. We're right now in the process of combing through the data with our data teams and our teachers, and gearing up for our next cycle of targeted supports in advance of NJS LA testing in the spring. So it's quite busy, but everything's going very well. And that concludes my report for tonight.
Any questions for Lauren? Assistant Administrator Report, Stephanie Chark.
Right now, we're in the middle of the budget, and something I talked about, I believe the last meeting was the increased health benefits. And our health benefits bill in December was $600,000. Our bill in January was $685,000. The majority of that is the board share. We have very little of it coming from the increase that the employees had, probably around $2,000 of the increase. So that's a large number. And as we're going into next year, we know that that's going to be our rate from July through December, and we're going to have to project from January through June of 2025, or 2026. And the past three years, at least, have been significant increases north of the double digits on health benefits. On January 9th, I believe it was, we had the Executive County Superintendent walk the facilities for the CSEF portion of the facilities audit. He walked the New Milford High School, as well as Gibbs Elementary School, and that went really well. Also on that day, we had the Department of Agriculture here doing our food service audit. And they were here on January 9th and January 10th, and they observed a lunch at Gibbs and breakfast at Gibbs the following morning. That also went really well. At the elementary school, and I believe it was last year, we rolled out My Meal Plan, or Buy Meals, where parents can select for the weekend. We all prepaid. We've had a decline in sales at the elementary school when we moved to that platform. And so after January 31st, we're no longer going to use that, and we're going to allow parents to buy for the month and pre-select, and then they'll just put money on the student's account and not actually have to select a meal. We ran into a lot of issues, and the feedback so far from the elementary parents is they're really excited to not have My Meals. And that concludes my report for now.
Any questions?
Hey, I have a question. Since you're speaking in the meal, in the past, we've talked about outstanding balances for families. How does that go?
It's still high, and we're still generating monthly letters from my office to families who do have high balances.
Is there any recourse that we have?
Unfortunately, not. We have to give every student a meal if they want.
No, I mean for outstanding balances.
Not really. I just keep sending them. Sometimes we get the money, sometimes we don't.
Like, is there a way to hold the report card? I mean, is there something that we can do, or it's just please pay?
Wasn't the call back one of the options?
It's really difficult. All the superintendents I've talked to complain about the same exact thing, because it's something where it's like considered lunch shaming, so you can't bring it up to the kid. If you hold the report card, you know, and they don't know about it, it's really the parents should be helping taking care of it. And I think sometimes we forget, like, elementary is one thing, but there's eighteen-year-old kids, the same thing. So it's really, really difficult. We've talked about it. I'll continue to talk to other superintendents, see if they have any great ideas. It's really, really hard. You're still doing well, though.
Yeah.
You're still doing well. You're still turning a profit, I think.
Yes, that...
Well, we have...
I think, yeah, it might be an audit recommendation. That was the other thing. The audit did wrap up, and the auditor is going to present the audit at the next meeting. And I believe one of the recommendations was the access in the food service account, and we have to spend it down with that. Too much money in there. And that goes back to COVID, when they were giving all that money.
Right, okay.
So we've been working on spending it down, but the problem is in the cafeteria account. It's like a business. You have to depreciate your value, like, all the assets. And so when we think we're buying these big-ticket items, it's not actually helping us, because we have to offer that as well.
Okay.
We were thinking about researching a better cookie.
Yeah, there's like different cookies. We're going to get better bread, maybe we're going to get better chicken. There's like options, so we're working on it. Getting creative around to everything.
Okay, any leads?
Oh, in the budget. So the committee is facilities, so finance facilities, we need to get together. There are going to be drafts.
That's the next thing.
Okay, well, then, you know what we say? You say? We'll talk about that on the report.
Which is right now.
Okay, there we go. And me and I met with all the administrators who have pieces of the budget individually and sat down with each and every one of them. And actually, the state budget software opened today. So I started to input everything. I have an idea of where our revenues are going to be. I'm going to take into account that state aid is going to remain flat. It has two years to come out in the cut, so we'll see what happens. And then we'll see where the revenue is coming in, and hopefully have a balanced budget. Thank you.
Any leads on Board Committee?
No, we haven't talked about all the things. We met on November 11th, finance and facilities. We did talk about in detail about the budget, about, you know, the CSEF audit, all the audits that were happening that were causing great stress to the administration, but we gave them a chance to kind of look at the entire district and whatever audit they needed. So we're just moving around and trying to have the best and try to do what they can. Also, negotiations on two. We had our darkroom night, super-secret negotiations meeting. Met, and we met about negotiating with the color. That's all I can say. We talked about negotiating.
Thank you. Okay, any correspondence?
No, this week, I had some work.
Oh, you have a question?
No.
No correspondence?
No, this week.
Okay. Open to the public for items on the agenda. Ed outlined in the Milford Board of Education bylaw 0167, each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes. I seek a motion. Paige and John, seconded by John, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Does anyone have any questions about the agenda? Okay, I seek a motion to close to the public. Tony, seconded by John, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Board Action. I seek a motion for BA 24-25.58, .59, .60, .61. Need a second? Tony, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Educational Programs and Curriculum Committee. I seek a motion for C 24-25.24, .25. I need a second. Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Personnel Recommendations. Have any recommendations under Superintendent? I seek a motion for PA-25.89, P 24-25.90, .91, .92, .93, .94. I need a second. John, roll call?
Mr. Eldrow?
Yes.
Ms. Eldrow?
Yes.
Mr. DePlasta?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardi?
Yes.
Mr. Luna?
Yes.
Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Dunn?
Yes.
President Gomez?
Yes. Finance and Facilities Committee, Cheryl?
I seek a motion for P 24-25.136, .137, .138, .139, .140, .141, .142, .143, .144, .145, .146, .147, .148, .149, .150, with special thanks to those that donated. .151, with the same thanks, special thanks to the Beckus family. .152, .153, .154, .155, .156, .157, and .158.
Need a second? Joe, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any old business?
Just because I didn't want to say it before. It's just a reminder that when we have committee reports, that we do have that template. And if it could be shared with the board before a meeting, so we kind of have an idea.
Sure.
Because we do, I know we do share them, but like, I know in the past...
No, it should be good practice. So if we have a committee, the chair should write a report and just send it to everyone before the next meeting.
Except on the super-secret negotiations.
Yes, well, some of those, right? We can't put in the book, but correct. Anything else? Any other old business? Any new business? No? Actually, I just want to just bring up, we do have a school boards meeting coming up on June 30th, Bergen County. You could do it virtually, or in person, however you prefer, but it is good if we could have a big...
June?
Not June, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I think it's totally virtual.
Is it totally virtual? Well, January, I could count it. But January 30th? I know a lot of us go, but I think we can all try to go to least one. It does help for participation level in some of these things and knowing what's going on. Okay, open to the public. I seek a motion, outline in New Milford Board of Education bylaw 0167, each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes.
Motion.
Paige, seconded by John, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anyone from the public? Councilman, anyone?
These are all the way back.
I know, it looks like we just went. Is it Warner back there?
Anyway, Happy New Year to everybody. I hope everybody had a great holiday season. It's great to be back. So far, there's not too much to report. We had our reorg, everywhere's our reorg, and most of our committees to the town have also had their reors or will in the next week or two. And we're very excited to be working with you again this year. So it's great to be back. Thank you again for your great partnerships. Looking forward to a great year. Thank you.
Okay, I seek a motion to close to the public. Joe, seconded by Cheryl, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any board member request for additional information? Okay. Closed session is hereby moved at the Board of Education, adjourned to executive session in accordance with the provisions of Section 8 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 PL, for the purpose of discussion and consideration of matters pertaining to the filing subject. Personnel matter. The minutes of the executive session will be made available to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. I seek a motion to go into close. Tony, seconded by Andrew, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And we return with not contained information.